To your weight on that, it's a very popular.
Yeah. It was somehow, man, that's pretty nice. We can get those small communities growing globally again.
Yeah. What we're seeing a lot is the, like a developer or development preparation buying two and three to get a housing started in their community and then hoping it takes off.
They just need to make sure they have the. I think that's a gay issue. I was just up there the other day.
Yep.
And I think they're doing a favor of keeping the rates super low, but they.
They don't qualify for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know we've so many of those grants we do through James River are they wait until the whole system collapses and then they gotta go sky high rates.
Yeah. Yeah, then it's such a jump that.
Yeah. Just. He is.
So thank you all for being here this evening. Make sure, please make sure that your phones are either shut off or muted and please enjoy me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rob.
Again, thank you all for being here and welcome to our Yankton County Commission meeting on April 1st and this is not a fool, so. So we're gonna start out, Patty, please take role.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Any financial conflicts from any of the commission members?
I have one with part two of claims.
I don't have.
Page one.
I have none.
And I have none. At this time, can I get a motion to approve our agenda for this evening with a, with a change? To add the opening for a position for our ambulance administrator position.
What number is that going to be at?
Uh, we could do that at number. Five. A. Real quick, it's just gonna be a, an announcement.
Yeah, and it's just a, just give an authorization. There's no motion.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that. I mean, we do have a hiring freeze on and I guess I'd like to kind of explore some other options.
We're still replacing the positions that have been evacuated though.
Well, I.
And I think this is a very important position to.
No, I, I, I agree, but. Do you think we could put that on like, like the next gender or something? Cause I, I know we did a hiring freeze and this would be kind of going against that. I know it's an important position, um, but, but it's a. You know, I guess, I guess I'm okay with what the board decides, but, um, you know, we had a higher increase and I, at least it's my opinion. I think we need to kind of stick with that if possible, so.
We can discuss that on five A. Or five B, I should say.
I would move the approval of the agenda with the addition of item five B.
Take me a second.
Second.
Motion by one to second by Don. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. At this time is time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against members of this body, county staff. Individual or organizations, the chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. And we do have Wayne. Hodge. Step forward. Welcome.
Thank you. All righty, this is new to me, but, uh, it has come to my attention that I cannot have chickens when I live in the country.
Sir, just give your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wayne, Wayne Hodge.
You want his address too?
You're fine. You're fine.
Well, we live out there by the mayor's shrine. I'm sure y'all, all from here, you know that. We lived here six years and anyways, uh. Most, well, just about all our community was, is interested in getting, having a few chickens, you know, uh. In the backyard where the, nobody would ever see them, you know, in a pen on top of that. So anyways. I don't know how long the three minutes is. I'm not timing, but anyway, so just want to thank y'all for the. Talk here, so, but, uh. Like all y'all's good consideration to maybe help us get some chickens. So, okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification, you're not wanting a hundred chickens, are you?
No.
You like less than ten chickens?
Ten, yeah, ten or so, be fine. No roosters. What, what is their code walk call or Gary?
In our.
Oh.
Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd volunteer to work with Gary for.
A chicken ordinance?
Well, I'll get something proposed.
He's on the next agenda.
Okay, well, in the meantime, I, uh, if you want to get with Gary. We'll sit down and see if we can get something to.
Okay.
Figure it out.
I just warn you that it's, uh, it's awful hard for the family to eat them when they couldn't land eggs. I'm the country boy. I raised in the country.
Got the old ax?
Yeah, actually, well, there's ways that we did it without ax, so I don't want to bring it above here. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Anyone else in the public, uh, want to speak at this time? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We'll move on to, um. Item number five on the District Three presentation.
Thank you. Love you, Ben.
It's our invisible commissioner.
We need to. Thank you for having me this evening. I won't take a lot of your time. Um, I don't have a lot of new news to report since last year, but I always want to come out and thank you for your membership and your continued support, uh, for our staff out there and we hope that we do a good job and, uh, the takeaway, I guess, would just be that if we don't, uh, please let us know. And we don't know sometimes what is going on or what you need help with, so don't ever hesitate to call and ask or tell us what we can do to help you, um, because sometimes we just, we just don't know. But, um, I would draw your attention to the report that I handed out. Um, one thing to note, I was here last year saying that we were trying to hire someone and we have finally got that done. Uh, bottom of page one in the bottom right-hand corner, Shannon Veerik is new to our office, uh, as of January. She came on as a, um, but I call him a planner, but I think her title is Community Development Specialist. So I do feel like we are full staffed again, and so if there are projects that, uh, we had put on hold, we're trying to get back to those now and some of the longer term things, um, strategic planning, that type of stuff. We are probably more suited to be able to start some of those types of things now than we were when we were a little bit short staffed. So excited for that. She seems to be working out really good. Um, on pages two and three, it's just a little bit about, uh, the agency relationships that District Three tries to maintain at state and federal level to help us do our job and to diversify our revenue base and so forth out there. Um, you can read through that, but we do a lot of work with the DOT, South Dakota Housing Development Authority. Um, we host, uh, an apex, um, person which is, um, funded with Department of Defense funds and we have a contract. That's somebody that would work with people that need a SAM registration or that are trying to contract with the government and they need a UEI number and sometimes that's not so easy. There are firms out there willing to do it and you can pay for it, but please send them our way. We'll help them for free. Um, also kind of our bread and butter programs are like the Governor's Office of Economic Development and, um, Department of Ag and Natural Resources. We go to that well a lot for different funding. And EDA, USDA Rural Development, um, those types of things, Office of Emergency Management and so forth. Uh, kind of at the bottom of page two, some of the highlights for our office for twenty-four is that we continue to host the Small Business Development Center. And that is a free service to anybody that's looking to start a business or maybe expand, maybe even sell a business or transition it to the next generation. Those ladies have been there a long time. Um, they do very good work. Again, it's a completely free service. So if you know of someone that can use that, please send them our way. Um, we continue to administer some of the ARPA funds that are coming through to our counties and we, like I said, we, um, do the SAM registrations. We host the STIP meeting that's coming up in June, uh, this year and we worked with the DOT with, um, the GIS guys, the Right of Way, Road Research and so forth. In twenty-four, we wrote fifty-two funding applications and twenty-one of those were successful for almost forty-one million dollars. So it was a busy year. Um, I think we fared pretty well on that and we still continue to have the revolving loan fund. It's called Area Wide Business Council. We made fifteen loans out of that fund for a little over one point four million dollars in our, in our fifteen counties. Um, and because we are considered an economic development district under the auspice of, of ADA, every five years we are tasked with writing a new comprehensive economic development strategy. So twenty-four was the year for that. So we have that and it's out there on our website. If you ever care to go look, it's, it's entirety is there and so forth, uh, with the surveys that went into that. Um, we continue to sell the governor's house units and we sent out over seventy packets of information last year, sold twenty-three different units, um, which they're still about a two-year wait. So people are willing to be patient for that product. It seems to be still very popular. Um, kind of going through the bottom of page three, there's a lot of the GIS activities that I know you folks take advantage of with the Next Gen nine-one-one. Um, the county websites that we do hosting, Arc Online and so forth. The very last bullet on there, um, I was here kind of last year talking about the Regional Food Business Center that we were excited to be a part of with North Dakota, South Dakota and Minnesota. Well, because of the, uh, freezes and some of the pauses that came out with the, with the new executive order under the new administration, that is one that has been, um, frozen, I guess I would say. It may come back. We're not sure. I don't know when we'll know. Could be weeks, could be months, could be never. Um, but we will, we will, um, regroup if that happens and get back on it, but our budget did take a little bit of a hit on that because we were getting some TA money for, for providing those services and I, I'm kind of. Little, it's a little bit sour grapes because I felt like we were just getting up to speed with that and then boom, it went away. So we'll keep that, we'll keep you up to date on if anything changes with that. But if you get into page four and five, it, it is more specific to Yankton County, um, and it, and it talks about the different applications that we submitted in twenty-four for the folks in the county. There's been some brownfield stuff going on, it looks like. Um, the RFSI is again like that regional food stuff. There was some rec trail out there for Gayville Valen School District, um, the Business Builders. Again, that was some of that, um, regional food stuff. And then, um, James River Water Development District, looks like we put an app in for Gayville. So little bit, um, sometimes those, um, applications can be cyclical, things get approved and then the projects have to be done before you can go on to new things. So I wouldn't say this was a heavy year for Yankton as there have been in the past, but it was a, it was an okay year. We did have three of those, um, ABC loans that I talked about in the county. And, uh, the SBDC continued to work with about twenty different folks on projects. No governor's houses this year for Yankton County. Um, but we do a lot of admin, um, on different grants, State Revolving Fund, Community Development Block Grant, Hazard Mitigation, ARPA Funds, um, USDA Rural Development. So forth, and then a lot of the GIS activities. I guess I would tell you that, um, like I said before, unless we get a call from you, we don't know what we can be helpful with, so please don't ever hesitate to call. Now, we do know that there's a lot of consultants out there working in this world too, and, um. Please always give us a shot at what they're doing because hopefully we could do it cheaper, maybe quicker, maybe better. And, um, you know, we're, we're willing to work hard for our membership and we want to keep you folks happy and, and keep that relationship growing. Um, April is, um, it, it's here today, I guess, and it's, uh, application season. There's a lot of applications due in the spring and then again in the fall there are two. So, um, we'll, we'll be busy with that. Um, like I said, we'll continue to watch the funding freezes and I think that's about all I've got unless you folks have questions for me. I'm happy to take any of those. Otherwise I'll let you have your time back.
Just thank you Lori for everything you guys do for the community and citizens. So, so great partnership and we certainly appreciate you.
Thank you.
Two hundred and fifteen to one.
Yeah. We can keep that number going up.
Just so everybody realizes for every, what, dollar we pay out for District Three, we get two hundred and fifteen dollars back. So I know people are sending us emails telling us, well, we need to cut all these programs, but I think it's hugely beneficial when you look at everything what we've accomplished together, so.
Yeah, I'm, I, I hope that we can continue to keep providing that good service for you guys. Thank you.
Thanks Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to five B now, and that is, excuse me, to, um, open up an application for our ambulance administrator that, uh. That we lost here a couple of weeks ago. Any further discussion?
Think now would be probably a good time to do a quick look over of the, um, job description as well before we hire anybody and, and just see if the. The pay is too high or too low on, on that position. I've always kind of thought it was a little bit high for something like that. So I, why we're doing it, I don't think it's gonna hurt to do something like.
Um, we, we did revise the job description on the, when we hired the last administrator. And I think that we have kind of seen a, a huge improvement by actually hiring an administrator to manage and make sure that that department is ran efficiently and correct. I think that we would at this time, if we don't move forward with an administrator that has experience in that, that line of work. I think that we would be falling backwards again, and I don't think we want to be put in that situation. Therefore, I guess I would be in favor of opening it up for.
Advertisement?
Advertisement to replace our former ambulance administrator. That's my opinion. Can I get some more discussion from? Other commissioners?
We can open it up. That doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna get a lot of applications. But I think we need to. Discuss who we hire.
Yep.
Do we, Mr. Chair, do you want to set up a committee, two commissioners to maybe do the interviews?
Certainly, and we can, and, and last time we had a, we had a, a member on that committee from the hospital also. Uh, can't remember what her name was, but she was in, in emergency care at the Avera Hospital and I'm sure she's still there and probably would want to sit on this, that same, this same committee.
We should invite somebody from the city.
I think that's a good.
I don't have a problem with inviting someone from the city either. Uh, I think it's a good idea to have a committee to do the interviews with these, these, uh, applications. But at this time, I think we just need to get approval to open it up for.
Second.
No motion.
No, I make the motion. Oh, no motion.
We do not need a motion as far as.
And we can anyway.
Correct, we can.
I, I would also say, you know, maybe it would be a, a time if we're gonna, you know, just have the discussion with the, the city. Uh, again, you know, the ambulance is a hundred percent on the, the back of the county, even though ninety-two percent of the calls are in the city. Um, maybe this is the time to look at it.
I could assure you the city is not gonna help pay for the ambulance administrator's salary.
No, I'm, I'm not.
For the ambulance, so they don't care. So why, why are we even inviting them?
Worth having a conversation, working, working together is what, what I would say. There's no harm in asking.
I had a conversation with the city manager today briefly about this and there was no interest, so. At this time, I think we need, need to move forward and, and we, we had the, 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 the department was headed in the right direction so that we can continue to provide a service to our constituents in Yankton County that is desperately needed. So therefore. For whatever's worth on my part, I think we need to move forward.
So then what do we need, Patty? Nothing?
With the wood up to have.
Okay. And, and we can certainly put a committee together within the next week or so to. If we start getting applications in, so.
Are we planning on, uh, keeping it open for a month or open until filled?
I'd say we'd keep it open till filled. Okay, moving on. Chris.
Going to ditch board.
I make a motion, we go, Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we go into ditch board.
Got a motion by Dan.
Second.
Get a second?
Second.
Second by Wander to move into ditch board.
In favor?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. May, motion carries. Welcome, Chris.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, recent here tonight is, uh, at, uh, joint Clay County Yankton, uh, ditch meeting here about a month going for a million. Uh, request some dollars to, uh, clean the. Yankton Clay Ditch from, uh, New Highway fifteen going north, uh, probably two years previous to that. Uh, from New Highway fifty going south to the Yankton Clay County line was cleaned and, uh, uh, trees removed, what have you. Uh, there's still some problems going to the north of it there and, uh, there was an approval for up to fifty thousand dollars at that meeting. Uh, primer construction came in, uh, relatively quickly, you know, ahead of their construction. Primer construction came in relatively quickly, you know, ahead of their construction season. And they cleaned about thirteen thousand five hundred feet of ditch. I sent, I forwarded a few pictures of the befores and afters, what they had done. Lot, lot of tree removal, found the bottom of the ditch again. Got rid of a lot of cattails, a lot of sediment. Just every five feet, there's this coop taken for those thirteen thousand feet. There's probably about nine hundred feet, nine hundred and fifty feet of ditch to be cleaned. On three hundred and ten street in Burlington Northern San Fe Railroad where that intersection is east or west of Gayville. They got to go across the high pressure gas line, navigate around the railroad a little bit there. And then also north of three hundred and ninth street, there's probably about fifteen hundred feet of ditch there that, you know, we ran out of the dollars that were earmarked at the Yankton Clay Ditch. So requesting additional funds, we can finish up what was not completed previous and be equal to all the landowners are putting into it. In that area, you know, there's a tax assessed on all the landowners that are in that district. So the, there is a pool of money there that has been paid in already that in my mind is sort of owned by the tag or the landowners in that district. So we're just trying to get it to where everyone has equal footing. You know, the downhill or downstream landowners, you know, the ditch is working properly. It drains. On the top side, it was holding water back. If you drive down New Highway fifteen, look at the ditch about a mile west of Gayville, look up through there, you can see we got water movement. There's still a little bit of blockage underneath New Highway fifty. I've reached out to the state to just ask, but I haven't got a response back of they can clean underneath New Highway fifty and get rid of whatever's holding it up in there. So like I say, just would like to finish up a couple of little spots on it and could do that. I would say it's in really, really good shape for fair amount of time to
Patty, how much money is in that account? Okay, so they're more than enough for the, the So there's more and and then just like Chris said, because I just got an email and people are thinking this is coming out of the County General Fund, there's a tax assessment on the landowners for this. So the, the neighbors are, are paying for this. We're just basically holding and collecting their dollars. And then when it comes time to do maintenance, we're using those funds. And I just wanted to be specific on, on that because I think there's some confusion. And again, I appreciate, Chris, that you're, you're willing to take charge of this and do that. So
And will that amount cover the cost of cleaning this ditch? Or will we be getting another visit?
I hope it's
No, no, yeah, we should be done. You know, on that ditch, it should be complete then as far as you know, like I said, that little section there on three hundred and tenth and the Burlington Northern Railroad. You know, like I say, they quit, there's just a, a little chunk there, like I say, to do, then probably about thirteen hundred feet north of three hundred and ninth street. That if we can get to that, that'd be handy, then the rest is clean, it flows, it works. So
So, Chris, the, the amount that you were requesting, I think if I, my memory serves me correctly, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but it's what, twenty-three, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's an estimate based on the contractor's been doing the work, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the request for twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars for ditch cleaning. Come out of the Yankton Clay Ditch Fund.
Yeah, the motion by Dan, second by
Second.
Don. He beat you.
Do you guys hear me?
I didn't even hear him say it.
I did. I'm close.
You guys hear me?
Any further discussion?
You guys hear me?
Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right.
I don't know. Ryan, are you on?
I am on. Do you hear me?
Oh.
No.
Where would he be on at?
Yeah, take the wrong.
I, I know, but he's not on the phone. He didn't call in.
He's on the computer back there.
You need to turn the speaker.
Maybe he should just call in.
Do you hear me now?
Did, did you have a question on this?
Oh, yeah, I did have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. My
Up here so we could
Do you, do you hear me from the computer? Do you hear me from the main speakers? You should hear me from the room speakers. Okay, well, my, my really quick question is exactly where the work was. That, that this twenty-one thousand was going to be on the Yankton County Ditch. For Chris, if you can give me some little detail about exactly where it's at.
Yeah, the, the stuff, the work is done up till today would be from New Highway fifty going north all the way up to three, three hundred and ninth street. Minus a section there where the BN line intersects three hundred and tenth street.
Okay. And that is, that is one of the places that was identified as a problem area in the last ditch meeting.
Okay, we good? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to move back into regular session. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Transfer fees, this is a resolution that was
Did you want to speak any on this, Brian? I don't see, so challenging our department heads to cut costs or identify sources of revenue. Spoke with our registered deeds and just, this is just a proposal that we had, so.
Right, you know, when we talk at these finance committee meetings with Don and Dan and Gary and Patty. We look for ways to save money, you know, looking for ways to tighten our belts, whether that be making those computers last a couple of years longer or the vehicles or what have you. But we also trying to think of some ways to generate new revenue. And this is an idea I threw out. Right now, when you sell property, the transfer fee, and it's been this for literally eighty years, is a dollar per thousand. So then if you, if, let's say you sell a three, you know, three hundred thousand dollar house, the transfer fee is three hundred dollars. And it hasn't changed in so long and there's been so much, I think, recognition hopefully in state government, that counties are strapped and need some additional sources of revenue. I think we're hoping that this resolution is the first step toward getting that into state law next, next January, February. So now therefore, if you sell a three hundred thousand dollar house, it would be a nine hundred dollar transfer fee instead of three hundred. You know, and I suppose all that's negotiable, you know, maybe we take it to peer and they say, how about two dollars a thousand? You know, I think we could use it to three, but it's a starting point. In Yankton County, we collected roughly a hundred and seventy thousand last year at a dollar per thousand. So at three dollars per thousand, that would have been five hundred and ten thousand, which is a, you know, a shot in the arm. It's not going to solve all our budget problems, but it's, it's a step in the right direction. So I'm certainly willing to, to go to peer and help testify for it if we can get the County Association to approve it as something we want to present.
And, Mr. Chair, that's kind of was the idea is it would need to be approved at the county level, then the district, and then go to the state. And nothing might happen to this. We could all approve it and it could go to peer and none of the legislators want to do anything with it. But, you know, it's an idea and, you know, we just need to bring those types of things forward. So, uh, depends on your guys' comfort level. We can take action tonight or if you guys want to wait at another meeting, it's up to you. But again, it's, it's going to require legislation change. But we're just using the process that we have available to us.
Well, whether we take action tonight or not, it's not going to happen till next year. So we might as well take action.
Well, and, and we don't want to miss our opportunity of sending it to the district and then sending it to the state for the convention in September. So in just eight, eighty years, things have gone up, you know, I'm just, I'm looking here, a dozen eggs costs fifty-eight cents, bread costs nine cents. And beef was twenty-seven cents a pound and those prices have gone up and this is just another opportunity. So.
Patty, have you seen this resolution? Yeah. I guess we could, we could take action now and be the frontrunner in this to, to take it to the rest of the county. So I don't have a problem with the deed of motion to approve this resolution and move forward with it.
I guess I'd make a motion to approve it and send it to the Southeast District.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve this resolution and send on to the eight, eight county, Southeast, yeah, region. And this is just what I printed off of the packet here.
Oh, because who has the original?
Uh, Gary, I believe, is the one who prepared it.
Okay.
Yep, and hopefully, you know, thank you. And hopefully with the people are getting prices for their property they never even imagined. So hopefully that would help them understand and absorb the increase a little bit. Like Dan says, eighty years is a long time for a fee not to be adjusted. And I, and I know that this session, they did a, some of them that requested some of the changes that have, have not been made for forty, fifty years, gotten some approvals and then some of them didn't. So it's, it's one of those things that you don't know unless you try. And all they can say is no.
Yep.
Or nay.
To be clear.
I think Ryan's trying to say something.
Yes, to be clear. This fee is automatically adjusted because as prices of houses raised, this
It's going to be a long session if we can here.
Someone must have disconnected the microphone to this system. So we'll, I will have to look at this. What happened?
Can you just call in so that?
You can call in.
Give me the number.
I called in from Mexico.
Give me the number.
What's this number?
You can call this one and I'll just put it on speaker. And he has the number.
I'd add one more thing, a benefit of this transfer fee is it is one of the few fees we collect where the county keeps a hundred percent of the proceeds. Some of our fees, we have to send a slice to peer, not this one.
Yeah, like the license plate fees are a great example of that when they increase that, most of that money doesn't even stay in the community. So. Hi, Ryan.
Can you hear him?
Hello?
Hi, Ryan.
I hear you.
Okay, Patty, did, did you still have a question to ask for Brian or for us, for the commissioner? There's some discussion?
I wanted to comment on this is that this is a percentage fee. So this fee has been increasing. It's, we're talking about increasing a percentage of the sale that the county is going to take. Not really increasing a fee, we're increasing a percentage here. So it is going to, it is going to affect people. We have been getting more as prices increase, we do get more in these transfer fees. So I'm not entirely sure if we've really researched this, but this is just a, to be clear, it's just a an ask to the state. So not really a, we don't have the authority to actually set these fees. We are just asking the state to adjust these.
Yeah, exactly.
Correct. Yes, this will have to be a legislative issue. But I think if, if the county, South Dakota Counties Association presents this to the legislature in twenty twenty-six, it's, they, they could either approve the, pass the bill or, or cancel the bill, bail it, you know, or move it to the forty-first day or whatever happens at the legislative level. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a motion.
I have a motion by Dan and I have a second by Wanda. Any further discussion?
Step up to the microphone, please.
If it goes to the legislature, that's all fine. That doesn't mean every county has to increase the fee. The bill will be written in a passive form. And they'll use the word may rather than shall. So if a county chooses not to go up, they don't have to. If a county wants to go up, they can. So I see no reason why the, the county association would, would not support this because it's not like it's a mandate for all sixty-six counties in the state to go up to this, this fee limit. It, it, actually, all it does is put a, is a maximum levy for you. And that's all it does.
Just, just like the wheel tax, not all counties charge a wheel tax.
Yeah, I mean, you could do six dollars or seven dollars on it, you know, it doesn't matter, but they do have a maximum. So and, and they'd write that legislation in the same manner. So that it would be conducive to all counties then. And there, there should be no reason for opposition then.
Yep, yep. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. All I got to sign the original.
How are you going to have Ryan vote? You want me to take him off speaker and then vote?
For Planning Commission? Whatever he could text to Patty or he texts his vote to Patty.
Yeah, or me or whoever.
Or Gary.
Rock. Text your choices, your two choices to either me or Gary.
So we have six Planning Commission applicants. We'll be filling two tonight. So the six applicants are Michael Moose Welsh. I'm saying that because we already have a Mike Welsh on Planning Commission, so people know, know the difference. Nick Huber, Lauren Nelson, Chris Barkle, Martin Lorenzen and Tim O'Hara. And Lauren and Chris are currently serving.
Do we have a piece of paper or something?
Yes, and I have some. And we can either, I can pass out more, you can put second, third, if it doesn't go through the first time.
Okay, I'm looking at them.
I think that Nick Huber four votes. Chris Barkle two votes, Tim O'Hara four votes.
Make a motion to approve the Nick Huber and Tim O'Hara.
Second.
A motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the slate. Or the, the winners of the
The election.
The election. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll let them all know.
Hey, next item on the agenda, interest rate. Hey, next item on the agenda, interest rates.
Okay, um, I think it was last year that I suggested that the county look to the various financial institutions to see what we were receiving on the monies that we had on deposit with the various banks. Um, Ms. Barbara, if I said that right, Barbara, uh, did provide some information. I went around to some of the banks and got, um, at least one quote, if you will. And the one quote that I, one of the quotes that I got is that that bank would pay us three point five percent flat out, straight across the board on the monies we have on deposit. And if you look at the information in the packet, we have some ba-, uh, some monies on deposit at two point eight percent. We have four million dollars at two point eight percent. We have one million dollars at one point eight five percent. We have six hundred and seventy thousand dollars at one half of one percent. We have five hundred and twenty one thousand dollars at point six percent. And it appears that we have three hundred and seventy thousand dollars at point zero one percent. And just, I did the math on just a couple of them. For example, the difference between three point five percent and point zero one percent is nine, over ninety two hundred fifty four dollars. So I guess my For a year. I guess my suggestion would be, as, uh, Mr. Hunoff indicated, that we're looking for sources of revenue, that it just makes, uh, common sense to me that we ask these banks, particularly the banks that we're paying, are paying us below three point five percent, that are paying us point oh one percent or point oh six percent. Um, that we put the money where it earns the most, the most interest for us. You know, I understand everybody, nobody wants their taxes to go up, but here we have a source of income that is just pretty much sitting here doing nothing and, um, I doubt very much if the employees that the county has are going to feel all warm and fuzzy if they don't get a raise next year. And as Mr. Clemish is, our Commissioner Clemish is fond of saying, we're running out of money. So that's my proposal. And since we're only here for discussion, as far as I can tell, but that'd be a Patty thing. Well, actually you, as to whether or not we need to have a, have it on something that we're going to actually do or something we're just gonna talk about.
And I don't know by law if she's in charge of it or if it's her, I mean.
I just think somebody needs to bring it maybe to her attention that there are people that will pay us over three percent more for the county's money, which would seem to me to be a no brainer.
Does, uh, does FDIC insurance, uh, have a total limit on it?
With regard to counties, I'm not sure what the answer to that question would be. Maybe Mr. Larson.
Wanda, when you were speaking, would, would the banks that, it's on, would the banks that we have, would they all be willing to raise it to that? Or was there just one bank willing to do that?
Well, I know one bank for sure will do three point five percent. I do know that one of the other banks, when I went and talked to them, they, on their own, after I talked to them, raised it up from less than one percent to over two percent. So I think they're willing to do it because the county has a lot of money in their bank.
Yeah, I think, I think somebody just needs to approach the banks and say, hey, this, this is the balance that we're have on hand and, um, we either need to move it up to three and a half percent or we need to move it. I mean, I know there, there is FDIC has some control over the amount that they will insure.
Well, for, for an individual such as yourself, it would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per account. But I think there are different rules for governments, otherwise the United States government would have a problem because they don't deal in two hundred and fifty thousand as a rule. But I think, um, what Ms. Hoyum is trying to say is, uh, Musavara should have some input on this and
I agree.
But if she's not gonna do anything, we should. Cause it's been a year when I first approached the subject. And here we are, a year later and we've lost a minimum of ninety two hundred on one account, thirty three thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars on another account. That's using the old math, about forty two thousand dollars that the county doesn't have a year later.
Could we put this up for bid?
Can we? I don't know. Maybe that's a Mr. Larson.
Ryan, you had something to say?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a point just not even related to this. I agree with Wanda. I mean, anything under two percent, we need to like rethink about where that money is.
Mr. Chair, um, would we propose setting up a committee?
I don't think we need a committee.
I would say Ryan and Wanda and go talk to the treasurer and see if they can come to some sort of a agreement on that and
That's fine.
I, I would be, uh,
Who's in charge of the, uh, treasurer's office?
The treasurer's elected.
No, I mean, which one of us?
We don't have elected, uh, we don't have liaisons for elected departments.
Well, we have one for the Director of Equalization.
It's not elected though.
Oh. She's appointed, that's right. Okay.
You know, I, I guess the way to look at it is, you know, elected, they're responsible directly to the voters. So but if, that would be a proposal if Ryan and Wanda would go speak with her and see if they can come up with
Yeah, I think, I think Patty needs to be involved.
Yeah, report, report back at the next meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right.
You good with that, Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Wanda.
Definitely. Okay, Ryan, you're up on the IT.
Yes.
Yes.
Few things that I really want to see coming in through this is, um, that we have a service that is also going to be helping within the budgeting process because we need to have an IT plan that it's a little bit bigger than just what's gonna happen in the next couple of months. It's really, we gotta look at what happens with obsolescence with certain key part, five years from now. So and we gotta have plans for that. It's, you know, it's an infrastructure. So I did, did do some changes there. Um, a few things also around AI. Our biggest thing with AI is we really need to make sure that we have the right policies in place around AI. The use of AI is pretty ubiquitous, but having the right policies around the use of AI is very important. But, um, uh, Gary, uh, pulled this from, uh, I believe it was Brookings. But, uh, and then I just added in a few more things. Um, if this looks good, then we should put this out for an RFP and see what kind of bids we get back.
Yeah. I'm fine with that, Ryan. I think it's a, a good plan.
Do we need a motion on this?
For an RFP, probably do.
I think we do.
Uh, Gary, did you have anything you wanted to add? So I'd, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the RFP. And Ryan, how long did you want to put this out for? Like a month or what were you thinking?
I think a month, uh, it's a month, mom.
Two months? And then, okay, I, uh, would you be fine if we did an RFP for two months?
Six weeks? What do you want?
I think six weeks should be plenty.
Uh, uh, how about up to six weeks? And if we get proposals before then, we can, we can deal with them then. Would, would that be satisfactory? Yeah. Do we want to go up to six weeks or do you want it that long?
I think six weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't think you want to go much past that if we, especially if we need to add something to the budget. So um, I can get it out to various people and we'll put it out on the website and things and
I, I'd make that, I'd make that motion for, um, approve the RFP for up to six weeks.
For an IT
For IT proposal?
Services.
Services.
I'll second that.
This is, this is a, it's a service. So whenever we need them.
I have a motion by Dan. I think it's second.
I seconded it.
Oh. I missed that part, Wanda, I'm sorry. Second by Wanda to approve the request for proposal for the IT department uh, here for the county. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
So are we using what we have now until?
Yes, yes. Nothing's changing at this point in time. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, budget cost savings. I think, I think Don Kettering and Dan are
And then if anybody in the public would like to come up and give us ideas too. Bob?
Well, I'm gonna update you what we've done on the, uh, the group that we put together, uh, as a, a task force to review this. Uh, we've met once and, uh, we've decided that maybe we'll add another person or two to the task force uh, to get involvement from some of the higher populated departments. So, uh, I, I think we'll do that. Um, today I had a meeting, uh, with the department heads, uh, discussed the situation, the outlook, uh, from the co- uh, county, our, our funds position, uh, and talked about, uh, a, a report that, uh, the department heads would, uh, complete, uh, so that, uh, the commission would have, could have a better understandings of, uh, overs or unders on, on budgeting. Uh, I, I think, uh, we'll probably meet again in the next week or so, uh, to start looking, uh, into different options. Uh, in another area, but related to this, uh, I've asked, uh, Patty, uh, to, uh, contact, uh, the auditors in the, uh, eight county area that we, we're in and request that they send, uh, their, uh, salary matrix, uh, and to us, uh, cause we're gonna be one of the first topics that we look at, we'll be reviewing, uh, how, uh, how we handle salaries. Because we all believe that, uh, is, is very likely that we, we, we will be scarce to see a grant. And, and inflation continues to continue on up and, uh, the legislature is not supporting, uh, any projects that will provide, uh, revenue for the county. So, uh, we believe in order to, uh, make budget, we have to, uh, uh, do it on the planning side. And so that's, that's where we're, uh, attacking this. Uh, we will, uh, as we get ideas, we've had a couple, three of them, uh, laid before us, uh, that, that we'll review uh, and, and do a study on, uh, and we'll move on down the road when, when we get it, bring it to the commission. Uh, we want to have, uh, have visibility, uh, available to all of our customers, all our county, uh, taxpayers. So that they can, if, if they have ideas, they can submit them. Uh, if they, uh, see things that we should do differently, they can submit that. Uh, so, uh, we're looking at it as a, a pretty open process. Uh, I would hope that we would have a, a package put together. Uh, a, a month or so before we start budget processing. Any questions?
I think you're doing a whale of a job.
Well, it's gonna be tough. It's gonna be tough because, uh, well, everybody knows that everything's getting cut and we won't be the, uh, we won't be left, uh, alone not getting cut. So anyway.
You know, I've heard comments already that, that it's, it's good that we are approaching this now instead of waiting till a later time when, when, when it's really tough. So, I commend you and I'm, I'm sure Wanda and Ryan commend both of you guys for taking the initiative and hitting this head on. So any other comments?
No, um, I know it's pretty early, but, uh, budgeting, um, we have an idea. We, we might want to start a little bit early this year, um, based on what we'll, we'll have to do. I know it's months out, we probably don't want to think about it, but we probably should think about it a little bit. You know, when do you recommend? We usually start
Probably June.
Probably June. So, um,
Cause I usually don't get asked for the budget sheets on like the first of June. So.
Yeah, and I, you know, maybe we
I hate to go a little, any earlier than that though, because our, our data is, we don't have a lot of data at that time for, you know, revenues, but
A half a year. And, uh, that kind of fits in the design frames that we discussed today on our recording and so on. It's a half a year. I wouldn't in sport of that.
Yeah.
And, and I think the, the reality is, is we're gonna have to make some cuts. I think we, everybody realizes that going in, um, there's statutory obligations we have to pay for. There is a small amount of discretionary spending and instead of going, you know, maybe there's a cut here, maybe not here. Do we want to consider, you know, at least with our discretionary spending for different organizations, uh, we're just gonna cut everybody a certain percent? I mean, that almost seems more fair than cutting this person at a higher amount.
And, and discussions today, uh, to, to add to what you're saying, Dan. In discussions today, um, we talked about the need for leadership by the department heads where they're out uh, and actively answering questions that the public might have about budgets. We want to provide them with accurate information that they can do that with. And we want to teach them, uh, that, uh, that's part of their responsibility and jobs to be able to, uh, explain things uh, to, to the public. And, uh, I think everybody, uh, uh, was not necessarily happy, but, uh, wasn't real discouraged.
Okay.
If we don't take the responsibility on, we're gonna look terrible and, and when this is all done and it'll, it'll get over, there'll be a time when things go back to normal. But when it's, when it gets done, the state's not gonna look at those counties that have failed and stumbled and done nothing. They'll look for opportunities with, and I, I want to be on the side of the counties that have done good financial planning and, and, uh,
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Okay. Next item, surplus property.
Did you want me to take this on your chair? Uh yeah, we have surplus property that we've taken in on on a tax deed. Uh I just want to bring this forward and. I I think when I talked to Patty, she said that it is in our name and and we.
I think the county took it like two years ago, is my understanding. It doesn't matter at that point, he's a squatter. Which is one of Mr. Kettering's favorite words.
The, I guess the reality is that the county isn't getting any. Property tax on it. We we are actually paying the insurance for this home um.
County's not getting any rent either if that man is still living there.
E- exactly. And then the liability, what happens, you know, if he gets hurt or something, you know, or. The house needs major repairs. I just think the times come, we probably get a plan together. Um one thing I know, Senate Bill ninety. Uh went through, I believe it went through and clarified the tax deed. Process. I know Wanda mentioned the Tyler versus Hennepin where if there was any profit. Uh it all goes back to that person and I I believe that Senate Bill ninety changed a few of that. So is that something we want to wait? Um till after.
July one.
First, okay, so so maybe we just get the the plan together on when we. Should we wait until July first to surplus it? Or should we surplus it now and sell it after July first?
Well, I I don't think you could. Do that. I think if we do it after July one, we don't have to worry about the man who may or may not be living in there. Because then it will be county property. I think. Um.
Okay.
The county has been overly generous if the county has owned it for two years as I've been told. Um to allow him to live there without paying anything to live there. No taxes, no insurance. Nothing, no rent.
And and Tyler, would you uh be willing to work with us and kind of give us a plan on what you'd recommend moving moving it forward and and if you think we should wait till after. July first when Senate Bill ninety goes into law or if we could do it now, if it makes no difference, I would say maybe sooner but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
Okay.
Oh, this gentleman.
I'm not even sure if somebody still lives there, do they? I I was.
I heard that he was still living there and he was in his seventies. Do I know that to be true? No, that's just what I heard.
Do we should, is that something we should send the sheriff over to do a? Well check and.
It's our property.
Yeah, I think it'd be very appropriate.
Yeah, I do too. And if there's a, isn't there a sixty or ninety day? For squatters that they got to.
Yeah, I.
Well, if he's been squatting for two years, we got problems anyway, so let's wait till July one.
But but the the process is, you know, we're gonna lose money on this, no matter what happens.
Three more months isn't gonna matter.
Get rid of it, get it. To somebody, get it back on the tax rolls and.
Yep.
So uh I'll meet with, I'll meet with Tyler if you want. Maybe Wanda and I will meet with Tyler and we'll get a plan together and present it to the board so.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. We'll check on the city special assessments and all that as well.
March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
I would move to approve the March eighteen, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Don, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I would move to approve part one of the claims.
That motion by Wanda, second by.
Second.
Ryan. Any further discussion on claims? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. In a motion for claims two.
Move approval of claims two.
Motion, motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the second set of claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. One exception, one.
Abstention.
Abstention.
I would.
Motion carries.
I would move to approve the March twenty twenty-five payroll.
Motion by Wanda to approve the March twenty twenty-five payroll, second by Dan. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Move approval of the abatement for veterans.
Is that actually two?
Okay, which one? You want me to do numbers?
To a mouth with a uh different amounts.
Okay, uh do you make a motion to approve the first abatement of one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents?
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve the abatement.
And this exemption is uh due to disabled veteran status.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I would move to approve the second um abatement, which appears to be in the amount of two thousand.
Second.
Thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the second abatement, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. It's time for public comment. Anybody have any final comments? Yes, sir.
Mine up, Rick. Welcome.
You're meetings ago, you're moving there.
Yeah.
You're wrestling the cow.
Couple of meetings ago, you guys. Spread out the double chipping of a road. Did you take that from two ninety-fourth? Because I haven't heard anything about this wind project or. I mean, Trump's in office, your old baby drill. Have anybody heard anything from the PUC? Is it still through?
So here's here's what's happening. The two, the wind farm is still in progress.
Okay.
To the best of our knowledge, it's gonna happen. Uh the Trump Drill Baby Drill, he's still in favor of wind and solar and that's. So so the the project on two ninety-four has been pushed off until the the wind farm is finalized and.
Yes, yes, yes. Cause they were supposed to help build.
Yes, because they're gonna reimburse us to.
That's all I want. Okay, coach. My road needs fixed. Sorry.
And and I and I am working with them to to do some some fluoride in front of the product like your place and stuff like that to.
I know I'm the only one on my side of the road from. Four forty-four to four forty-eight. I know I'm the only one.
Southside.
Northside.
Northside. Cause when the wind comes out of the south, I live right up on a little hill.
Yeah. And I've been out there, like I said, I'm working with them to to make sure they do that, that that I'm trying to get them to do it actually this summer.
That'd be great, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You should, he's one of our regulars, Patty.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, uh public comment is closed. Commissioner updates.
I'll start out uh. What I've been involved in is that our task force is working on. Uh. The budgeting process and uh taking a dive into the financials. Uh and uh. Uh getting started on the uh salary uh. Scales uh and that's, I guess it. I did attend a Z O E D meeting. Uh and uh. There were some uh. Really favorable. Positions that our state has taken uh in performance. On several different areas, but I don't have it with me, so I can't tell you that which ones were. We're we're a pretty good state.
Yeah. You want to go and then I've got a few.
Yeah, um just yesterday Governor um Roden announced a homeowner's tax relief proposal and just uh. The short skinny of it is an option for a county sales tax that would be used to directly offset. A homeowner's uh property tax. I don't, it it won't be any additional revenue for counties, but it should be able to. Help the homeowners and, you know, stand uh. By to support the governor. I it's a it's a different proposal and I think it bears at least listening to uh what it could uh. What it could do.
It it should be clarified, it's owner occupied.
Owner occupied. According to the governor's talk, he said uh forty-four out of the sixty-six counties. According to their calculations, could have uh all of homeowner uh taxes paid by the sales tax. And it would, you know, a big tourism county like Yankton, uh if that might even be higher, so. Um applaud the governor for looking at different ideas. Uh next I got something I'll hand out. I went to a community. Vitality meeting in Gayville. Um they appreciated the county commission's help and it was uh really. A good uh a good speaker from SDSU came and they talked about the importance of, you know, housing, particularly the in these small towns. Uh needing to grow and develop and bringing in new business and they uh gave else a great example. There's a. Uh they're looking at getting a couple more governor's homes and they also talked about, you know, other towns that. Like blunt that aren't doing it and are basically becoming ghost towns. So uh. Housing, you know, just it's key to especially these small towns, meet yourself. I'll hand you these out. Um.
Actually, I've, Dan took took the the governor's proposal for the uh the. The property or the sales tax issue. Now that's that does have to be go through the summer. They're gonna do a summer study on that. And tweak it however, whatever, and there's, I think there's there's six legislature. Twelve legislatures in total. They're on on the task force. There are no county commissioners, so. That gives you a little bit of an idea how that's gonna turn out.
Selected yet, have you heard?
I believe so, but I can't say for sure. They are. There's six, six representatives and six senators. And then there's then there's uh. Uh Van Hughes and Lieutenant Governors on there and then a couple of other.
Everybody.
Other president's people.
Doesn't collect property taxes in charge of how to deal with.
So and then and then and then when you have an abundance, if if all the owner occupied property taxes are null and void. Then then the balance of that money goes rolls over to commercial and agriculture. Uh property taxes also. So so there's no extra funds in there for the county whatsoever. You know, they they put on a couple more mandates for us that we gotta, that the counties have to pay, but they didn't give us any any extra avenues for any extra revenue. So that's just an additive to what Dan had mentioned with the and and I applaud the governor also for. At least coming up with a plan. It's it's something that's never been addressed before, so. And then the other thing, just for the county commissioners, Dan, John, Wanda, Don and Ryan, uh a thank you card from the center. Thank you all for your contributions to our annual Rockathon and contributions is. Private contributions um that the Rockathon doesn't have anything with with company accounting funds. Uh but they did raise over seventy-seven thousand dollars, was raised to help seniors in our community. You've made an impact and and how that helps the seniors is the Rockathon generates revenue to pay for the. The uh.
Meals.
Meal on wheels. Um and this was a record year last year. I think they said they had sixty-eight thousand dollars. This year they raised seventy-seven thousand, so.
Which which commissioner raised?
She wouldn't, she didn't tell me, so.
I think it was, it was this guy.
I had a funeral that that I had to go to that day, so I didn't get to rock, but uh appreciate Bill Conklin for filling in for me on that, so. And I appreciate you guys going over and rocking. I'm sure you're very well practiced.
Good event.
Rocky, incident in a rocking chair, so.
Good event. Thanks, John. Uh.
And I would move to go into executive session for personnel issues pursuant to STCL. One dash twenty-five dash two subparagraph.
One second. I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, think we're into executive session. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.